Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. If, uh, we do have the TVs outside, if there's any chairs out there, I don't know if there are or not, but if some of you would be comfortable sitting out there, you'll see the whole thing on TV if you want to sit there. We have, uh, excuse me here, let me find, we have 26 people that do not wish to speak, they're in opposition, that do wish to speak, and we have 56 people that do not wish to speak, and they're in opposition. Now, tonight, the university has requested a postponement of this so they can do some homework or whatever they gotta do. But we have three appellant, Heidi Littenberg, Eric Holland, and councilperson Jessica Suffrazo. Would, uh, Ms. Littenberg, Mr. Holland, would y'all come up front? If somebody could make a little spot for them, I would appreciate it. They're the appellants. Now, the way we do this is, uh, depends on what these three people decide and whatever everybody else wants to do, but we, um, we go through this. First, I'm gonna open up the six o'clock hearing. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. We did receive numerous emails and also a letter requesting continuance from Mark Johnson on behalf of UNR.
Okay, and so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps you might start out with asking the president of the university or whomever is speaking for the university to explain why they would like the continuance, and that will give everybody an understanding of what they are requesting the continuance.
Okay, whoever the representative, please come to the microphone of the university. Dr. Johnson?
I'm Mark Johnson, president of the university in Nevada Reno. When we requested the continuance or the delay in this consideration, it was very close to this hearing, and we weren't clear that we could be, we would be able to talk with the interests related to Wolfpack Meats, but we did have an opportunity to talk with the interested parties in Wolfpack Meats last Friday, and we have a process of discussion going on there. So, I would leave it up to the council to do whatever you think best in terms of the delay, but we're ready to present if you want us to.
Have you been able to meet with any of the applicants for the appellant?
We have contacted the appellants on a number of occasions, and did we actually talk to them?
No, we have not. We called.
We left, we called each of them and left messages, but did not have an opportunity to get a call back.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Did they clear three seats for y'all?
Yeah.
Good, good. Get comfortable, relax. Yes, thank y'all very much. Mr. Holland, how do you feel about an extension or a delay? Come to the mic, please.
I'm okay with the continuance as long as people who want to speak may.
Yes. Ms. Littenberg?
I agree with that.
You have to come to the mic. Introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Heidi Littenberg. For the record, I agree with Mr. Holland.
Okay. Councilperson Suffrazo.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree as well. I do have a question for the president, though, because I did have the opportunity to meet with the university last week. I think it'd be helpful to all the public here to know, you had said you're ready to move forward tonight, however, I would like to know what was the outcome of the meeting that you had, because most of the emails, I would say 95% of the emails I've gotten are in regards to the meatpacking facility, and I know that you guys were going to have a meeting, and I would like to know what the outcome of that meeting is.
Yes, this is Mark Johnson again. We met with a group on Friday of stakeholders, representatives of stakeholders, not everyone who had an interest in Wolfpack Meats. We won't have an opportunity to talk with each individual involved. We had a meeting for several hours, and we had representatives from those individuals who get their, who are producers, who get their meat cut and packaged at Wolfpack Meats. We had representatives from the food co-op, and we had representatives of those meat plant owners and managers who have been sending us letters requesting that we no longer keep Wolfpack Meats going as a state subsidized entity in competition with them. So, we had all three of these interests in the room at the same time. The result of the meeting was that we got a list of items to include in a request for proposal, which we would intend to put out in January or February to explore, to see if there is interest on the part of an individual or a group in either leasing or purchasing the Wolfpack Meats operation, so that it can be a thriving profit-making meat plant operation and no longer being subsidized by the university.
So, when do you plan to go out for that RF, is it RFQ, RFP?
Yes, we plan to go out for that in January or February.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
And maybe, I don't know, I guess a question for legal, based on that, how long can we do a continuance for?
You may continue it for a reasonable period of time. If, in fact, UNR wants to have a meeting with all the folks that are here tonight, you should give them opportunity to do that, I would think, perhaps either the end of January or sometime in February would be an appropriate, reasonable period of time, from what I've heard here so far.
Now, could it go up to six months, Marilyn, to give the university time? One of the issues in their own PUD is they're not even looking at, they're asking for the zone change now, but they're not even looking at doing anything with this property for seven to 20 years. So, I don't see what the harm would be in a six-month continuance to allow the university to go out to do their RFQ, RFP, find out what the responses are, because that's the concern from everyone, is the meatpacking facility.
I think that that question should be presented to the university to see how they respond to it, perhaps they're fine with it, perhaps they're not.
May I respond?
Yes, sir. Identify yourself for the record every time.
Mark Johnson again. We are very concerned that we need to make a decision on this entitlement for development of this piece of land right away. The uncertainty of the future planning of the flood project, and we will make a presentation to show that we have been instructed by the manager and the attorney of the flood project that if we don't get entitlement, wherever the flood project goes, they will not consider our request to keep the 104 acres separated for development. So, we think due to the extreme uncertainty of the flood project and its actions over the last several months, we need to act as soon as possible.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. President, I also serve on the flood control committee as well, and as you're aware, that fell off the list. Based on what the corps had said, we really don't need that property over there anymore, number one, but secondly, if we did need any property for the purposes of a flood control project, you know under the law that we would have to compensate for full, fair market value for that property. So, if you're not planning on developing the property for seven to 20 years, I still am not hearing the logic on a six-month continuance, what the problem would be.
If I could respond?
Yes, sir.
Mark Johnson again. At no time have we ever thought that the flood project was going to purchase that land, but to the extent that they are planning for the floodway, if we don't have this entitled, they can continue to plan for the floodway without us having that land entitled, and we don't, we want this land entitled as soon as possible, not for you to purchase, not for the flood project to purchase, but to hold it out of the floodway when flood planning does occur.
So, Marilyn, I guess whose decision would it be, how long we can continue this for?
It is council's decision.
But don't they have a right to be heard in a reasonable amount of time?
That is, well, council, I, council will act reasonably.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Assi.
So, again, what's happening here is if we make a motion to... If we make a motion to continue this, then you'd ask for people who couldn't be there at that many to make comments. I mean, should we make a motion first, then the public comment will be on the motion? Or just general public comment, however you want to handle that, Mr. Mayor? If we can make, so that everybody sort of has an indication of where we're headed, then they'll be able to more direct their comments.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Mayor, and I'll try this. Based on what the president had said on the meeting and them going out to the RFP, that we go ahead and continue this for 90 days, because we're during the holiday season here as well. I would like the university to have a town hall meeting with all these folks who are very concerned about the issues regarding the meatpacking facility and the other issues out there, and so, and really, if we can come to some kind of resolution, the public testimony may be completely different. So, I would like the university to have that meeting first, Mr. Mayor. That'd be my motion.
I'm gonna second that motion with a comment, Councilwoman. 90 days seems appropriate for me, but maybe it's just my direction or my feeling, but I think it's much more than just the meatpacking facility.
Oh, yeah, flood.
I think there's a lot more involved.
Absolutely.
And I know the folks started talking about the meatpacking facility, but there are more things involved with the land and usage, et cetera, so I don't want to kind of mislead anybody or just talk about that we're close to resolving this because of the meatpacking facility. That is not, at least in my purview, that is not, it's one of the issues, I don't even believe it's the main issue, but it's one of the issues certainly.
Yeah, flooding's a huge concern.
Good. Ms. Edra.
For the president, Mr. Johnson, is a 90-day continuation reasonable and responsible to your needs?
We will certainly follow the will of the council, and I'm sure within 90 days we could call such meetings as have been recommended here.
Okay.
Have the chairman on the motion?
Ms. Littenberg? Ms. Littenberg?
Yes. Now?
I would like to know what you think of the motion or postponing this and us getting back together?
Well, I guess, this is Heidi Littenberg for the record. What are the opportunities to speak this evening regarding this whole thing? Because we do have issues besides the Wolfpack Meats that need to be discussed, and we'd like to get that out now, if we can.
Okay.
So, that's the question.
Mr. Holland?
Same as Heidi.
Okay. Ms. Suffrazo?
I mean, we'll go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and I think they have, I would like to hear from the two appellants, what the issues are specifically. I think that would be helpful for when the university has their town hall, because I think those issues need to be addressed.
Okay. We have 56 people that do not wish to speak. Those names and stuff will be entered into the record. I have 20...
Is that in opposition?
Mr. Mayor?
Those are all in opposition.
Okay.
And those 26 will be, those 56 will be entered into the record in opposition. I have 26 people that are wishing to speak, and they're all in opposition.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second on the table. I wonder if we should...
We should take care of that.
...vote in that motion first?
We should take care of that first.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, could you? I mean, if everybody's gonna speak on this tonight, I'd rather just move forward. If the university's ready to go, and you're gonna have everyone speak tonight anyway, I mean, I'm prepared to move forward.
And that was the question I wanted to ask, to make sure that everyone understands, if we were to continue this after taking 26 comments, those 26 people would not be able to speak. We would have already taken public comment.
No, they wouldn't be able to.
If we continue?
They wouldn't be able to.
Yes. It's a new public hearing.
No, if we continue now without speaking?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
No.
If you, if you want to take public comment on the motion to continue, you may do so, but you haven't yet gotten to the actual merits of the case before you. So, it's your decision whether you continue it now or not. You can give anyone who says it, when you identify a time that you're going to continue the hearing to. You can give a person who says that they're not gonna be able to attend that hearing in order to come and give their testimony tonight, because they won't have a future opportunity.
Ms. Suffrazo, yes, Mr. Assi.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that, that John Catalcón, the city attorney, if people speak tonight, they need to understand that the issues may change, so they may be speaking tonight on a subject that isn't going to be a subject at a subsequent hearing. There's certainly, everybody has the right to speak tonight, and that's certainly, the council's willing to hear that, but on the flip side of that coin, they may be, you know, the issues may refine themselves, they may turn out to be, some of the issues may be resolved, so they may be spending their time speaking about issues that subsequently they're gonna find out have been resolved, and so, but that, again, they do have the right to speak.
Right. Ms. Suffrazo, do you want to withdraw your motion right now?
I still would rather continue it, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem hearing the public testimony, but again, it's my word, I've received all these emails. I think there's more discussions that have to happen. There's a lot of, I got a lot of concerns on this, and I think it's gonna make, take more time to resolve.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just by way of clarification, as the city attorney indicated, the process we followed before is if we decide to continue it, then it really isn't worthwhile for all of us to stay here for a long period of time, if we're gonna hear all of this all over again, when it really counts, when we have, as the city attorney indicates, the merits are before the council if we've decided to continue it. So, the public should know that we're interested in their comments, but really, the next, the next hearing, the continued date is the real hearing where we're gonna hear the merits.
And, Mr. Mayor, it's a second. I would want to move forward on the vote, too, but my opinion of that is that if we are asking for public meetings with these people, the concerned parties, if we let the people who want to speak tonight say what they want to say, I think it may help the negotiation, because then you'll have an understanding of where those people stand and how the university can react or not react to that. So, I think, I'm not opposed to staying here and listening to the people that want to speak tonight, who may not be here the next time, simply because it may help the negotiation or the resolving, or maybe it won't help, but these people will know, I think the emails have come, and obviously, there were a lot of emails that were people in town, because they're here tonight in their capacity room. So, I think that hearing the people speak tonight will help both sides, so that, I would be totally open to listening to what the people have to say. They came, I'm here, I'm willing to stay, and I think the other council people feel the same way.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any further to the discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion is six one, did I hear? Oh, six one, Mr. Deutsch opposing. All right. I'm gonna let Mr. Holland and Ms. Littenberg speak first, then Ms. Suffrazo. Mr. Holland, please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Eric Holland.
Ladies and gentlemen, as we go through this, there's 56 people wishing to speak. If you hear somebody that's already said something, you were gonna say, please, out of the courtesy, either yield to somebody or do something, so that we just don't drag this out and start repeating the same thing over and over. Would appreciate the courtesy if you would consider those things as we go along. Mr. Holland?
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt, excuse me, Mr. Holland, but I think as an appellate, he has a title to more than three minutes, is that correct?
That's right. I'm on line five minute.
How many minutes is it?
Five.
Me, would you please turn on the light?
Turn the light on or down?
I wanna show a...
Okay, turn on the screen.
Whatever it is.
There it is, right there, okay.
Can you make it bigger?
Is that a picture of me, Mr. Holland?
No, I did that a while ago.
Oh, okay, that's right, you've done that before.
Couple times. So, anyway, I'm gonna have a somewhat more global point of view. I appreciate the members of the council that advocated for both the continuance and the right to speak, because it actually is valuable to hear our concerns tonight, so you can deliberate the issues rather than everything always being at the last minute. So, those of you that advocated, for those of us that want to speak tonight, to be able to do so, I really appreciate it, because it's not always good at the last minute. So, thank you. This cartoon is published in Nevada Rancher, and we just really need to stop doing things the same old way. I really appreciate our farmers and our ranchers. I'm the cartoonist for Nevada Rancher, and I have been for almost 10 years. I personally could not grow a tomato plant in a pot in my loft, it died, so I really appreciate them. There's at least one member of this council who's thinking, all this guy cares about is leapfrog. What's, what's he doing here? Where's the growth gonna go? I used to be asked that years ago, when I was fighting for Wyndhamucka Ranch. Some of you may remember that. Today, it's different. What growth? So, we can't do things the same old way. So, there's a couple of points I want to make of why I'm here tonight. I am still concerned about continuing to upzone vacant land, wherever it is, that is not zoned for, on the outskirts of town, while Park Lane Mall sprouts wheat, and the city-centered motel molders with barbed wire right across from the Silver Legacy, giving our tourism, tourists a great scene. People love this farm, that's obvious. I love the farm. I actually like riding on the bike path that somebody was wise enough to construct a few years ago, and seeing open space, a piece of Nevada in the Truckee Meadows, without having to get in my truck. Second point, is selling off our university's assets in chunks a good idea? This is intellectual capital. Local farming is growing. We need to, actually, that leads to my next point, and it's global, it's actually almost a statewide or federal, is stop this no new taxes nonsense. It makes no sense. Running deficits everywhere, we're closing down schools. Let's, let's, let's pay a fair share of taxes, all of us, all those working people. I just wrote a big check to the state, because I sell art. And when I sell art, I always forget to collect the sales tax, so I have to write a check for it. It hurts, but I paid them. We need to fund the university, not turn it loose to fend for itself like an 18-year-old. I support local food and farmers' markets. I work as a teacher part-time during the winter, but in the summer, I'm completely stuck trying to sell art. And the farmers' markets where people sell tomatoes, I sell my art, like this calendar. This is a calendar we did at school, and if I was at the farmers' market, I would invite you all to buy it for me for $5, so you can see me in the back. I'm, I'm actually very bullish on Reno. I guess we just lost a national contest, we're the second most oppressed city in the country instead of the first. I like to win, I wish we'd won that, but I'm very optimistic and very bullish, I'm hardworking. I'm an optimistic person, and we can rebuild this town from the inside out, from the inside out, by creating products we can sell, not by selling off our assets like this Faulkner, Satoris family, if you've ever read Faulkner. It's a southern family that couldn't find a way to go to work, so they sold everything off. Let's stop that, let's, let's be sensible, let's direct growth towards the urban core, and I really appreciate your time. I thought I had 15 minutes, and I'm not capable of talking that long, anyway. Thank you.
I didn't think you were, I thought you'd pass out before.
I'm Heidi Littenberg, for the record. I wasn't under the impression that we did have 15 minutes, is that correct?
Well, yeah.
As a appellant, all together, we do?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna keep my part of it very short. I actually am representing a group of people besides myself, as a person who lives in that neighborhood, as a concerned citizen, so I'm gonna have Ann Loyola do the rest of the speaking for me, because as far as the flooding and all of the background information that she has, it's more important that she speak than me. Is that acceptable? Is that okay?
I'll rule in your favor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Please identify yourself for the record.
For the record, my name is Ann Loyola. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also have a PowerPoint.
After a while, fill out a blue sheet for me, too, if you hadn't already done it.
I already filled that.
Okay.
Okay, did that. My name is Ann Loyola. I'm executive director for Nevada Grown Farmers Association. I'm here tonight to request that you table the motion to rezone 104 acres of UNR main station farm until other options are considered. I want to suggest an alternative that can be of greater benefit to the university and the city of Reno and help create jobs. A few weeks ago, I attended the Reno Planning Commission meeting. I spoke with a high-ranking UNR official after the meeting. He told me, and I quote, "Nevada is 87% federal land and 13% private land." There is no agriculture in Nevada," I quote that statement. Too often, I hear that statement, "There's no agriculture in Nevada. The sad truth is that our urban society is out of touch with agriculture and its impact on our economy. I'm not a farmer, but I work with farmers, and I see firsthand the contribution of Nevada agriculture on a daily basis. Tonight, I want to educate everyone in this room just a little about Nevada agriculture. These pictures you see on the screen are the results of Nevada agriculture on our public and private land, food that goes into our grocery stores and restaurants and homes every day. Whole Foods Market in Reno buys from almost a dozen Nevada farms. The Great Basin Food Co-op buys from more than 50. Dozens of local restaurants feature local beef and produce on their menus. Casinos buy from Nevada farmers and ranchers, Johnnys Gwagas Nugget, the El Dorado, five-star restaurants in Las Vegas. Did you know that Las Vegas casinos are working directly with Nevada farmers, that Nevada produce and beef are featured, they're featured items on menus for five-star restaurants? There are two dozen farmers' markets in this state. For every farmer selling at the market, there are four small businesses selling and promoting their products alongside them, artists, food purveyors, insurance companies, retailers, businesses of every kind, local businesses keeping money in our local economy because of Nevada's farmers and ranchers. Agriculture is Nevada's third-largest industry, contributing more than $500 million to our economy. Do you know that Perry and Sons in Yarrington, just 100 miles from here, is one of the largest onion producers in the country? Just two weeks ago, a milk processing plant was announced for Fallon that will double the number of dairy cattle for Fallon farmers, creating hundreds of new jobs. It is being built by one of the nation's largest milk processors. Let's look close to home, right in our own front yard. Chris and Karen Foster of Hidden Valley Honey live in Reno. Two years ago, Chris lost his job as a research scientist due to company downsizing. Chris and Karen are here tonight. There is little work for research scientists in Reno in today's job market. The Fosters expanded their part-time honey business. Today, they have wholesale accounts with Whole Foods Market, Rayleigh's, and Scolari's. They're paying their mortgage and putting two children through college because of Nevada On a personal note, I lost my job three years ago when my employer downsized. I've never looked for work since then, because there was work waiting for me in Nevada agriculture. I thank Nevada farmers and ranchers every day. They're the reason I make my mortgage payment, and I'm not another foreclosure statistic. The university is downsizing its College of Agriculture, because there's not enough interest from students. Possibly, the university isn't offering the curriculum that today's students are needing, are seeking. Several years ago, a Fallon farmer attended UNR College of Agriculture meeting and told the university, "Farming and ranching are changing. Our producers need to learn new techniques. We traveled to other states for education, and it doesn't apply to our desert climate." The College of Agriculture replied that they couldn't help him, it wasn't in their curriculum. That same farmer went to Western Nevada College in Fallon and asked for help. With a $14,000 grant, Western Nevada College created a program, the WNC Specialty Crop Institute. Its purpose, to provide workshops in small farm education in line with modern-day agriculture and high-desert farming and ranching. Today, three years later, demand for education is so great that the program has expanded to southern Nevada. I want to share just a few stories that demonstrate this demand. Just last January, 140 farmers, students, and educators traveled to Yarrington in the middle of winter to learn how to build hoop houses. The workshop was taught by a professor, a professor from Utah State University. The University of Santa Cruz in California has one of the leading research farms in the nation. Their farm manager taught at a workshop. He told how demand for education...
Are you about to round up?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and yield my five minutes to Ann.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I have nine minutes total, I'm halfway through.
How many minutes?
It was nine minutes.
Go ahead.
I'm probably at four and a half right now.
She's gonna give you some of her time, so go ahead.
Minutes.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna start this paragraph over.
All right, sorry.
So, the University of Santa Cruz in California has been, is one of the leading research farms in the nation. Their farm manager taught at a workshop. He told how demand for education... He told how demand for education and high-desert farming and ranching is so great that his colleagues talk about creating a school to teach this curriculum. He described the University of Nevada Reno and the University Farm as a gold mine waiting to be discovered for such a school and research center. Educators for one of the top university farms in the nation believe that our university farm has potential to be a regional institute for agricultural education. I can speak with authority about this WNC program because I'm the director. It started on a shoestring budget with a list of 200 names exploring uncharted territory for this community college. Today, we have a database of 1,400, including farmers, ranchers, educators, students, businesses, and government organizations, all with an active interest in Nevada agriculture. This program has helped to create jobs and educate our students. However, as successful as it might appear, the truth is this program will never be able to provide the educations that our students need and want because it lacks the resources, resources that are available through the College of Agriculture and Experimental Station at the University Farm. As a land-grant university, UNR receives federal funds for agricultural education, and it is the College of Agriculture that can truly provide the in-depth education these students need to succeed. Most important, the Western Nevada College program demonstrates that today, there is agriculture in Nevada and there is student interest for 21st century agricultural education. The university wants to develop only 104 acres of the 1,100-acre farm. It is not only 104 acres. It is 104 of the most fertile acres. The Main Station Farm is also home to Wolfpack meats. While the issue here tonight is not Wolfpack meats, we must consider the impact of the loss of this resource. Demand for local meat is increasing at a tremendous rate, and current trends predict continued growth. Beef is a primary component of Nevada's agricultural industry, and the potential for local beef can be significant for our economy. I'm the first to admit that local beef is an industry fraught without challenges. However, universities across the nation are studying and working with ranchers to develop this industry that can put dollars into our local economies. We are more fortunate than most universities as we have Wolfpack meats, a multi-species slaughter facility to assist us in research and education. If lost, the cost to recreate a new slaughterhouse would make it impossible. These 104 acres are much more than just land to be developed. This land is intellectual property that has potential to create jobs and rejuvenate our economy. Without these 104 acres, the farm is a shell. Urban development will encroach, and it will be the demise of the farm. We all know that city folks do not like to live next to stinky farms and slaughterhouses such as Wolfpack meats, and that includes me. I understand that the university has been devastated financially by budget cuts, and I recognize that its emphasis is undergraduate degrees that the University Farm currently does not provide. Farming and ranching are not glamorous professions, but they require a good education to be successful. They provide honorable livelihoods that create a domino effect for job creation in other industries. I ask that the university look at a broader picture, begin with certificate programs that can expand to a four-year degree as the College of Agriculture rebuilds. Our university has the potential to develop our College of Agriculture and the University Farm as a regional center for high-desert farming and ranching, education, and research. I ask that this request for rezoning be tabled, that the university consider meeting with stakeholders to consider new and better options that will benefit our students, our university, the city of Reno, and the state of Nevada. 10 years from now, everyone in this room can drive down Mill and McCarran Street, past the University Farm. Your decision tonight, the votes of the council members in front of me, will decide what we will see. If the rezoning request is approved, 10 years from tonight, we will drive down Mill and McCarran. Instead of Nevada agriculture, we will see sterile concrete. Table the rezoning request. 10 years from tonight, we will drive down Mill and McCarran, and we can see a thriving university farm, an institution with regional impact, educating our students, and creating jobs. A university farm that everyone here tonight can help to rebuild. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. After that, I can't imagine anybody saying anything we hadn't already heard. Excellent job. Thank you. Anthony Postman does not wish to speak but is in opposition. Ferndelli, I'm sorry. People have an East Texas language that I haven't been able to lose for 47 years, so I'll probably butcher your name, so I apologize.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Catherine Cole.
Okay, 74. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
My name is Catherine Cole Ferndelli.
Ferndelli.
I'm a graduate student at University of Nevada Reno in the Reynolds School of Journalism Program. I'm here to oppose N1 rezoning proposition as I am a supporter of agriculture. Ann gave a wonderful overview. Can't really add much to that except to say that the average Nevada farmer feeds 128 people and employs approximately 12 people as a ripple effect of owning that farm. This, from a business standpoint, clearly displays the need for the continuance of agriculture education in the state. And, incidentally, agriculture is the third-largest industry in the state of Nevada and deserves to be embraced in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Haley Fulmer... Please, let's not be clapping after everybody. Haley Fulmer? Anderton Fulmer?
Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Haley Anderton Fulmer, and I'm a graduate student of land use planning and policy at the University of Nevada. I would like to thank the council for voting to table the petition to rezone a large portion of the university's scenic farm that is so genuinely valued by students and the community at large. I'm glad that the administration met with the ranchers that will be affected by this decision, but I'm here as a student who feels that the students have been forgotten in this conversation. We have not been reached out to about this, but normally we are. While most of the university faced horizontal cuts, our College of Agriculture was hit with vertical cuts. Cabner is the only college that has hard assets that can be sold. It is thought by many students that the vertical cuts Cabner faced were part of a strategic plan intended to wound Cabner and its ability to function, thus giving the university a reason to close the entire college and sell its valuable land and water rights after it began to struggle. I don't want to speculate on why the university is doing this, however, I know that students weren't asked about it. The sale of this land will not lower tuition or the burden on ourselves as taxpayers as it is a one-time financial gain. Perhaps, a beautiful and much-needed new liberal arts or computer science building will go up with the proceeds, and taxpayers will be further confused as to how we can afford to keep building while tuition hikes and complaining about state budget cuts are happening. Meanwhile, our farm will potentially feature a new office park and a high-traffic road connecting Mill Street to Sparks Boulevard. As a student who has served in student government as both an undergraduate and currently as a graduate student at the university, I can say that it's truly rare that the students are not reached out to by administration about such decisions. Perhaps it was because of the transition period that the university is in after the passing of President Glick, who is dearly missed, that students haven't been included in discussion this time. But this decision that could sever... This decision could sever the potential of the university to adapt to growing demands for grass-fed beef over feedlot beef, something that we are uniquely suited for researching, teaching, and practicing right here with the fertile land and reliable surface water rights that we already have. I would like to ask that this administration not close the door for real dialogue between students and the administration on this issue. I would also like to ask that you not close the door on a community-wide discussion that could lead to a new kind of agriculture program, if that's where our current or future president decides to take us. Just don't close that door yet. Thank you very much, Council, and thank you to President Johnson for his petition to allow further discussion on this, and we as students really look forward to working with you on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Suzie Setfin?
For the record, I'm Suzie Setfin. As a community, we need to be looking out for our food security, and eliminating operations like UNR's main station makes our region even more food insecure. We need to be evaluating all available agricultural land for production and not cutting back in order to... Because we need to be able to secure access to more healthy, quality food. Local food production can make our economy more resilient to economic and climate fluctuations. Let's go backwards, not forwards, helping to leverage UNR's position as a land-grant university. And as Ann mentioned, all the opportunities it can provide with more of a sustainable agricultural degree, vocational training. Speaking of other places down in Southern California, there is the Alba Organics Farm, which is an educational facility, which would be an excellent thing for UNR to suggest. You know, adding on to their program is a way to encourage more young farmers to get into agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Salaberry? Amber Salaberry? There you go.
Hi, my name is Amber Salaberry. I have a slide to go on the light.
You can put it on there. Turn it up the other way.
Thanks, I like the stickers. My name is Amber Salaberry. I'm one of the original co-founders of the Great Basin Community Food Co-op, and I'm the current general manager. I'm here tonight to show some of the economic impact on an urban level in regards to the local food movement. I'm excited to be here, and I'm really, really happy that everyone's deciding to take a bit more time to consider this really, really important decision. A friend of mine once told me that if you can eat it, drink it, or smoke it, then you'll be okay in any sort of recession environment. Despite the fact that Northern Nevada has been in a very deep recession since 2008, it astounds me every day to see how true my friend's old adage has become. In 2005, when we started the Food Co-op, it was hard to find three farmers who wanted to sell to our little buying club that ran out of me and my sister's kitchen. More than six years later, we have over 60 local farmers and producers, over 4,000 member owners, and we will finish this fiscal year with about a little bit over $1 million in sales in a 500-square-foot facility. This is all due to the local food movement and because of agriculture in Nevada. All of the above happened because of our state's current financial condition and people, as Ann mentioned, thinking outside of the box and deciding to take on new livelihood. I think that if the farm was rezoned as light industrial or business-commercial use, that it would limit the ability to teach new generations of young farmers, ranchers, and producers. The way that I see it, the UNR Farm Main Station is one of the last remaining open spaces of its size for agriculture within the city of Reno limits. That carries with it a lot of historical importance for our town and a lot of opportunity for future generations. The USDA published this year that there were over $4.8 billion of sales nationally in local food. As you can see from the graph that I'm projecting, our city's local food movement is growing in the same way. These statistics only represent the growth from our community co-op. That being said, many feel that the co-op is essentially the hub of the local food movement and where the harvest comes to town. From this venue, I have personally witnessed dozens and dozens of restaurants who are also opening their doors and selling local food. On the graph, I pointed out, the very first year, we were asked by three different local restaurants about selling local food wholesale through farmers. And just this last year, as we've started to open Northern Nevada's first regional distribution center called DROP, distributors of regional and organic produce and products, we had, I think, close to 54, 55 local restaurants. Not all of them are currently selling local food, but they've at least inquired, and as we continue agricultural and make open space for agriculture, and that becomes more viable in the market, more and more people will because it's the consumer demand and it's the trend. So we're having a major food paradigm shift right now. It's important.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I think that's it. Thanks so much.
Linda Gorlangton? Linda Gorlangton, do you have anything new to add? You come on up.
Linda Gorlangton, a local person, wishes to oppose the rezoning. If I speak now, will I give up my right to speak later?
You mean next time? At the next meeting?
Yes.
Oh.
No?
Nope.
Then I choose to speak at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Kevin Porter?
I don't have that much to say right now since it's been continued. Thank you so much for that decision. I think it was very wise. Appreciate that, and appreciate the university for making that decision. Thank you. And I would make a recommendation to y'all. If you haven't had a chance to go down to the local food cooperative, the Great Basin Community Food Co-op, how many of you have been?
One.
Nice.
Yeah.
Soon. Very soon. Amber's the lady to ask about that. But yeah, if you haven't been down there, please go. You'll be amazed by all the stuff that's going on with local food right now. Amber, did you want to say anything else? I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. You don't get to call people up here. I do.
Your position's open soon, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, no, it's three more years before my position's open. Don't run me off yet.
But he knows their names.
Gia Maricini? You got anything new?
For the record, Gia Maricini. Hello, Reno City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight about an issue that is of dire concern to me. As Gilbert Chesterson once said, "Education is simply the soul of a society as it passes from one generation to another." Passing the learning of agriculture from one generation to the next is essential in a state where, according to the Nevada Department of Agriculture, agriculture is one of the top 10 industries. Tonight, I urge you to pass agricultural education on to future generations. UNR was set on its path to be the higher-learning institution it is today during the Civil War when Congress passed a law that mandated states to establish colleges that would teach agriculture and mechanical arts. For over 100 years, the University of Nevada Reno has met that mandate by providing a college where students could actively participate in learning every aspect of agriculture. As the Chinese proverb reminds us, "I hear and I forget, I see and I remember, I do and I understand." Every time a student helps heal a sick animal, dig their hands into some warm dirt, or work their way through fixing an ongoing problem with a pin, the learning is more lasting than any textbook could provide. Hari and Raulero in 1994 point out the importance of this type of learning for all students. Students in a hands-on science program will remember materials better, feel a sense of accomplishment when the task is completed, and be able to transfer that experience easier to other learning situations. The hands-on learning atmosphere where students are able to learn all aspects of the agricultural industry is fundamental to passing on education from one generation to the next. UNR's main station provides optimal learning environment to meet the educational needs of all students enrolled in the program. I encourage you, as an educator in this state, to support the learning of our students by providing them with a facility where they can grow through experience. Selling off a piece of land is a slow process that eroding the integrity of education. Selling off a piece of the link to learning in order to build a strip mall is a statement in support of money over education. Once we sell off that land, it cannot be brought back in better times to resume education. Do we really, in this silver state where ranches rank third in the nation, want to prostitute the learning of future generations for the sake of a few dollars? I urge you tonight to evaluate the information and take a stand for education and for the learning of future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, my name is Doug Busselman. I'm the Executive Vice President of Nevada Farm Bureau. With a decision for continuance, which we support and appreciate, Nevada Farm Bureau would still like to stress our organization's opposition to the change of zoning for the 104-acre tract of land on the Main Station Agricultural Research Facility. We want to point out that our opposition is not related to the meat-processing facility. Our opposition is based on the change of agricultural use of our land-grant university's mission for agricultural research. We will continue to press our point of opposition in whatever venues that might be available in the future, based on the need to maintain agricultural research and education on the Main Station Farm. We don't consider the concept of property value being in We don't consider the concept of property value being increased by enhancing zoning status to commercial levels for this property having the same context as private property might. These facilities are public resources, public resources for agricultural research and education. As the parties involved in the appeal process work through their agreements, we would recommend that future public meetings are held to share any arrangements that are achieved. We appreciate the idea of the councilwoman in encouraging public town hall meetings. This will allow for a clearer understanding of the details of the, that need to be evaluated for potential future zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the record, my name is Philip Moore, and I have nothing new to add, other than I'd like to thank you all for the service you provide to our city.
Thank you very much. Sonia Johnson, or Sonia Johnson?
I'm Sonia Johnson. I'm a farmer from Fallon, Nevada. I also was raised in the Reno Sparks area, and I remember floods from many years ago. But one of the things I really am opposed to the change of the zoning, I know we don't have a great deal of research going on right now, but as a farmer, and especially in today's situation, it's very important to have ongoing information. And I attend everything I can, as far, whether it's in Idaho, or in order to keep up with what's going on. But with the travel and the kind of thing that we're seeing in the world today, there's increased diseases, as, whether it's disease for a plant, there's insects, there's ongoing things and changes and mutations, that we need research. Now, that, on that farm, they developed many years ago a vaccine for a disease. We've seen a lot of red water in cattle, and it's used all over the world. But we need research, and the University of Nevada has a challenge, because the high desert that we live in, the Great Basin, has different and unique situations. So I would like to oppose that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Shelley Brant, anything new? Starting to hear the same things, but it's my old age.
Sorry. Shelley Brant, for the record. I have only one thing to add. Everyone who came before me said what I pretty much wanted to say. This, I have one thing to say. I'm a public librarian. This is a book on urban agriculture. It's one of hundreds of books published in the last few years on this subject, and thousands of articles about agriculture and its importance to communities. My reason for bringing this is to illustrate that this is not just a Reno concern. This is going on all over the nation. Many municipalities promote local food production economies, but few can boast an urban meat processing facility and an urban farm. And I would ask UNR and the stakeholders, formal and informal, community leaders, to value that and make the best of what we have of our, this very valuable asset. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Bu. Darren Bu, there you are, I'm sorry, sir. Come on up. Give us something new.
I'm Darren Bu. I'm partner in Los Verdes Tree Service, and I just want to take a minute to, to thank you all for taking a conscientious consideration of this matter. And, and I would like to point to the idea of just the intrinsic value of, of open space. You know, I think, judging by the way the downtown area's been developed the last ten years, you have a good sense of that, and I congratulate you on that. And thank you in particular, Councilwoman Sveraza. I am a resident of Ward Three, and I appreciate your understanding that this is a complicated issue that everybody should get involved in.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. For the record, my name is Clint Cobley, and I am the state executive director of the Farm Service Agency of the USDA. The United States is the most food-secure nation in the world, and that is why Americans pay the absolute smallest percentage of their disposable income for food of any, not most, but any country in the world. We're simply the agricultural envy of the world. For nearly fifty years, we've produced net ag exports, this year totaling over $40 billion. We create one in twelve jobs in this country, and we create tens of thousands of jobs in agriculture in Nevada. Ladies and gentlemen, this didn't just happen. This happened because we made a great commitment to agriculture a long time ago. We created land-grant colleges and colleges of agriculture. We created a co-op extension to bring science to the farm. And I'll scratch my own back and say, we also created the USDA, the People's Organization under President Lincoln, you know, back in the 1860s. And we've also created some great organizations that have spoke tonight in defense of agriculture, whether it's the Farm Bureau, Cattlemen's, or whatever. For us to keep our food security, for us to keep the envy of the world in the rightful place of being the best country in the world for food security, we need to keep our commitment to agriculture. And that's the message I want to leave, and I want to thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Nancy Horn, Dish Cafe.
Mr. Mayor, I think she did.
Okay. She's in opposition.
She went to get her food truck.
Oh, good, good. Ann Bolinger. Anything new, Ann?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Ann Bolinger, for the record. I'm a resident and homeowner in the city of Reno, a graduate of the University College of Agriculture, and I am gainfully employed in the, in the natural resources. You've heard much about the learning opportunities from the students and for the students at the university. What, what I've not heard yet is also the, the professors at UNR, who not only conduct research at the main station, but present it at national and international conferences and publish in professional journals. While the loss of 104 acres may not impact the educational opportunities, it does impact the animal carrying capacity. For example, if the farm currently has a thousand, a thousand animals on a thousand acres, it cannot sustainably allow all 1,000 animals on 900 acres. Natural resource professionals, ranchers, and others all know the damage caused to soils, vegetation, water resources, and livestock when overgrazing occurs. By the way, vice chair Jason Woosley, who approved, approved the rezoning, publicly asked if there was grazing animals on the property. This informs me that he is truly unaware of this property and any potential impacts. Additionally, as you're aware, if I can show that, and you have probably seen this before, the Shrock River Flood Project is currently buying homes to remove them from flood-prone areas. I've also heard there's a proposal to raise other homes in the Hidden Valley area. While the PUD proposal seems to have mitigated their development, the city should consider the cumulative impact to the area. The zone, zoning, as proposed, does negatively impact the businesses, the wolf pack meats, as well as the remaining agricultural land and its values. The applicant identified the adjacent agricultural land uses and initially proposed a 15-foot landscape buffer. At the planning commission, one of the commissioners recommended an increase to 30 feet. To help put this in perspective, can you imagine a slaughter facility in the same distance as city hall to the Reno ice rink? That is 30 feet. This buffer, nor any buffer but open space, is compatible next to the slaughterhouse. Also during the planning commission, Mr. Nathan Gilbert with the city of Reno stated that the UNR main station farm was not identified for open space protection in the Reno Open Space and Greenways Plan. I had participated in those public meetings and workshops. Only speaking for myself, I hadn't considered the UNR's main station farm, because most of it remains outside Reno's sphere of influence. And perhaps naively, I thought it was protected by the university. After the planning commission, the Reno Gazette quoted interim president Mark Johnson as seeking the highest value for the land. This is considered speculation regarding the future market. Appraisers rarely, if ever, can estimate the value of ecosystem services, aesthetic values to the residents, cumulative impacts of development and flood potential, benefits of education to the university, its students, and community.
You're going to have to round it up.
Okay. The university should explore the funding options for the conservation easements, and there are programs available. I, I commend commissioners Dagney Stapleton and Max Hamilton for recognizing the importance of open space aspects of this parcel, and I wish for you to do the same.
Thank you very much. Give us something new.
I do have something new.
Good.
For the record, my name is Jill Heaton. I'm in opposition to the rezoning of the 104 acres of the UNR Farm Main Station. I need the...
Just go ahead and put your paper down, she'll pull it up.
You can see from this graph, this is population. Statistics from 2010 for the state of Nevada, it ranks the population from the lowest to the highest Esmeralda County, 789 people. Clark County, almost 2.8, I'm sorry, just over, just nearly 2 million. Clark County and Washoe County both account for collectively about two and a half million people in the state of Nevada. That's 89% of the population of the state of Nevada. Yet, they only cover about thirteen, or, they only cover about 13% of the geographic area of the state of Nevada. Another way to look at this, it's called a population, a population cartogram. The proportion of the counties are distorted as the population changes, and you can see in 1920, Clark County and Washoe did not represent or cover as much population in the state as, say, in 1950 or 1960. If you continue, you can see that today, Washoe County and Clark County dwarf the entire state of Nevada. Many could or would argue that this is the very reason why agriculture is no longer important to the state of Nevada. I offer you an alternative way of looking at this. It says to me that Nevada, rural Nevada, the Nevada that covers 87% of the geographic area of our state, has not changed. Washoe and Clark County have changed. We still have agriculture in 87% of the state of Nevada. That part of Nevada, the rural Nevada, is still out there, and we cannot afford to leave it behind, simply because Washoe and Clark County have grown so large that they cannot see past their own waistlines. The University of Nevada Reno, as a land-grant institution, is here to serve the state of Nevada, not Washoe County or Clark County, because we hold the largest population base. In order to do so, we must be committed to agriculture education at UNR, as we have so successfully done with mining, the other important economic driver in 87% of the geographic area of our state. Rural Nevada needs mining, and it needs agriculture. We are in a mining boom, but lest we forget, each mining boom is followed by a bust, and it is agriculture that remains, and it will always remain. Agriculture is critical to the, is a critical economic driver to over 87% of the geographic area of our state, and I suggest we look beyond ourselves to the rest of our great state of Nevada and save and continue to support agriculture at our university. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Andrew Church. I'm a fifth-generation Nevada rancher and a student at UNR, a senior at the University of Nevada Reno. And I want to talk today about opportunities for students, because as a senior, I'm looking on to pursuing a career, and if you would have asked me four years ago, I probably wouldn't have stuck around here in Nevada, let alone Reno. And the reason is, the university does a great job of educating its youth, but what does the state and what does the city do to provide opportunities for that education? And the, the point is, they don't. But what I've seen today is a concerned network of citizens who are encouraging sustainability and building the sense of community that keeps students here, that gives students opportunities, and for the university and for the city to turn their back on the needs of this community, on this growing sector, it's just, quite frankly, irresponsible. So that's just all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Jana Vanderhor. I'm a landscape architect, and landscape architects look at land a little bit differently when they start a, a project. And what I want to point out is, here's the lovely place we live, and look at the green space out there that is soon to, that might be, or is being proposed to be turned in more box stores, right out here. If we look closer at that piece of land, every farmer would be super jealous, because it is the most amazing land to grow food on. It is not good land to build commercial, industrial properties on. Silt loam is like the best soil for growing. Why are we building on it? Why are we even thinking of building on it? Another point is, it is in the flood plain. Agriculture and flooding are good marriage. Anytime the river floods on agricultural land, it brings in more nutrients. So this helps the state save a lot of money in flood claims, because the farmer's not going to send in claims for floods on the land, because it's free fertilizer. I'm also part of the local food network in town. It's a conglomeration of agricul, of governmental representatives, like Clint Coble. It's local citizens that are concerned about having enough local food to feed ourselves. We have UNR representatives and restaurateurs, and we have identified that we need more farmers in our state to make our state more food-secure. We also have identified that we need to protect wolf pack meats, because it serves such a big, it serves such a big, oh, I don't know the word, but anyway. Some, you need to know that some farmers can't get insurance unless they can process and package meat in one facility. And so it serves your community to have that facility there. And as a landscape architect, I know that the proposed zoning will not be compatible with wolf pack meats, so you'd be losing a huge asset to our community. So instead, Mr. Mayor, I believe you signed the climate change, the mayor's climate protection agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
And part of that is that you promised to preserve more open space in our community. In addition, Mr. President, former President Klick signed the American College and University President Climate Agreement, in which he also signed for preserving open space in our community. And so I wanted to ask you, as a council, is there any way that this can be rezoned differently than what it currently is and than what the university is asking for?
Thank you very much.
Mayor, city council, for the record, my name is Rob Hawley. I'm a fourth-generation rancher-farmer, 1989 graduate of the university, as 15, 20 other family members are. Some of what I learned, I learned on the 104 acres that's sterily referred to as the McCarran Strip. It's beautiful farm ground. And my perspective is that, were it not for the university, when it had a viable, applicable ag program, Nevada's ag industry wouldn't be what it is. That program has changed significantly. There still is a need in this state for ranged-based agricultural education. However, as other speakers have indicated, the growth towards local, sustainable agriculture is tremendous. People want food where, that they know where it came from. They want to have food that they know is healthy. They want to be eating cattle that weren't trucked 1,000 miles in the back of a stock truck to spend two days in a slaughterhouse. And I will mention, and I want to thank President Johnson for having us in his office on Friday, and I think that the privatization of, of wolf pack meats is something that is underway. I will mention as well that the perceived competition with regional operators is merely that it's perceived, because of the aspect of one-roof production. It's similar as 20 years as a law enforcement officer has to do with chain of evidence. When that meat goes from Fallon to Reno, it would be like sending your evidence with a good citizen from the evidence locker to the courthouse. It doesn't stand up in the end, and it makes... It doesn't stand up in the end, and it makes a problem with, with the end product. So that being said, I would really wish to encourage the council, and you as the mayor, and also the university, to really look at reinventing its agricultural mission to incorporate local sustainable food production, both in relation to livestock and plant science. The Great Basin, as has already been mentioned, is very unique. There's no other place in this country where you have people that are growing on, on land that gets two inches of rain a year and growing productively. And, you know, it would be a shame to have to continue to send our kids to Santa Cruz or to Utah State and some of these other locations. So that land is vital for the, the future of the university, I believe, and it should be kept open and green. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Wendy Borella, Borella?
For the record, Mr. Mayor, it's Wendy Borelli, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm, I'm not going to belabor this, but I do want to make sure that you understand that there is a, a fact that maybe we haven't brought up yet, and that's local food economy equals $4.8 billion. $4.8 billion USDA local food economy fact that just came out, and they are, we are trending at this point, $7 billion. It sure would be nice in all the things that have been demonstrated to you, that right now, today, Nevada can take advantage of that. And I think what we're finding is we have an interim president that possibly is, comes from centralized agriculture, and I think what we're talking about is decentralized agriculture. And so what we're hoping is that we can table this and come to a conversation about new kinds of curriculum to reinvigorate our university and to make sure that we protect that land just for that particular purpose. The other thing that I would like to do, and I'm sorry, I apologize for being a pain in your neck, but I am the one who started the petition, and I wanted to make sure that you knew that as of this meeting, we got another 125 signatures. Of those 125 signatures, 100 of them came from the state of Nevada. This is a very significant issue. It's significant across the United States, and the reason that we started this is because we believe that there's an opportunity for our city to rebuild itself in a completely different manner, and we want to meet with the university and help decide what the best course of action is, and maybe what we used to do isn't what we're going to do today. And I think you can see a whole public willing to join into that conversation. So thank you, interim president Mark Johnson, for asking us to meet with you in town hall meetings, and we hope to continue that conversation, and thank you, City Council, for hearing all of us. And, oh, I'm sorry, this ream of paper, because we're a green city and we have a green initiative, represents all of those signatures, but I'm gonna give it to you on a thumb drive because that's the green way to do it.
Terry Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Terry Thomas, representing the Eastside subdivision, for the record, and now for something completely different. I would like to gently remind the council of actions that they have taken in the past when there have been annexation, zoning, or master plan amendment opportunities north of Pembroke and south of Clean Water Way, to wit, the Mankey Family Trust parcel. The Reno City Council on March 23rd, 2011, quite rightfully decided that the proposed development on that parcel was too intense and not compatible with the rural-residential environment that surrounds it. Although the UNR parcel is more removed from our subdivision, it is in principle the same incompatible use. The unincorporated areas east of McCarran have a character and visual appearance that is undeniably different from parcels in the city of Reno to the west. The haphazard handbook put together by Wood Rogers can't seem to decide if residential parcels are adjacent to its proposed project or not. The planners and engineers from Wood Rogers maintain that this project will address, quote, "the sensitivity and compatibility with adjacent UNR agricultural operations to the east and undeveloped property to the south." What about the developed property to the east and south? Long-established communities in lower and upper Hidden Valley will be greatly impacted by this proposed project, and yet, our input has not been sought, and it, when it has been given, it has been ignored. In their own handbook findings review, Wood Rogers' application itself fails to make required findings under state law. They dodge the finding altogether whether this project will be a beneficial or adverse impact on us. In fact, instead refer to the fact that property owners on parcels to the south have submitted up, have submitted applications to your body to rezone or intensify development, both of which have been denied. They failed to mention that. They're also to promote the conservation of open space and the protection of natural resources in the area. Well, the 104 acres is currently open space and contains a variety of natural and scenic resources. How does the proposed project promote conservation to maintain those? Wood Rogers merely concludes that the property is, quote, "suitable for development," unquote. Another version of NRS says that the proposal must consider existing views. The open space vista, that is, the main street, main station farm, has been enjoyed by surrounding residential neighborhoods in Hidden Valley for 50 years. Wood Rogers' response is that the development is not located close enough to those residential developments to adversely impact views. And finally, NRS also says the development must protect life and property in areas subject to floods. Leaving aside the issue of lost lives and livestock, take a look at the actual graphic in Wood Rogers' preliminary hydrology study. Would you feel protected if this was your car? UNR's leadership has made it clear in their meetings, right here in this chamber, that they plan to monetize UNR farms. We need open space, not office space. If our UNR leadership team does not comprehend that sustainability of agriculture is important to our state, we might, we need to invoke a long-overlook state law that requires the governor to oversee transfer of university property.
Thank you very much. Kim Rodemar? I know it. Hey, Kim. Kim, how many years now have I been, come on, Kim. Yeah, you know how.
I'll be speaking very fast, so you all should have.
Oh, good.
Have it written out.
That'll be the first time.
Who's this?
You're wasting your time, Kim.
Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Kim Rodemar. It is my opinion that the plan to change the zoning of this land from LLR1 to PUD is short-sighted at best and dangerous at worst. The applicant's PUD handbook states that whatever is built there, that they will only have to mitigate for up to two feet of floodwaters. According to my understanding of emails with Paul Urban, in this project site, the floodwaters from 97 range from 1.5 to 2 feet along McCarran and the swale, to about 5.5 feet on the eastern portion of the planned PUD. It has been stated by the planner that up to 2 feet is all they have to mitigate for. It has also been stated by the planner that they will meet all city, that they already meet all city requirements, so it is unnecessary for them to have to do any further studies or run this through the flood model. A great concern to me is the PUD site itself. No matter what is built there, they will have to bring in fill to build on. It is my opinion that they are planning to build a dam along McCarran, holding floodwaters in at higher levels on UNR farms and subsequently higher water into surrounding neighborhoods. According to my understanding of emails with Paul, this might be a national flood insurance concern, and the city of Reno needs to look at it to see if the project is following the city's floodplain ordinance. Depending on what is built, according to Paul, there is a good chance that flood flows over McCarran will be impacted by the proposed fill in this PUD site. In addition, in this area, normal drainage from common storms cannot be what is utilized as if this area was the same as any other. In my opinion, if their mitigation areas are dug out, it's very possible that this PUD site will turn out to suffer from the same problems that many of us in southeast Reno now suffer from, higher groundwater and springs. In the last 12 to 15 years, more and more communities in southeast Reno have seen homeowners have to put in sump pumps under their homes. Mill Creek, Harren's Landing, Hidden Meadows, Rosewood Lakes, et cetera, have new homeowners getting pumps every year. I saw nothing in their PUD handbook to address what will happen if their dugout mitigation site becomes a year-round lake. On-site storage for displaced floodwaters appears to be, appears to be inadequate to meet not only the displaced water, but increased runoff from impermeable surfaces like buildings, parking areas, and streets. Streets, by the way, that we will have to pay to replace or repair every time it floods. During a flood project working group meeting recently, there was a slideshow of the Corps' preferred 50-year flood protection level with all its levees and floodwalls. It was stated by the staff that if this plan is chosen, then the, then the plan would increase floodwaters into communities south and east of UNR. Example, a 100-year flood would now have 117-year water. If this project plan is implemented in addition to the planned PUD, what do you think is going to happen to our communities? Another issue is the Yori drain. In the handbook, the plan is to put it underground. It is my understanding from emails with Paul that this is one of the first places that water goes over McCarran during an event. It is my understanding from, uh-uh. Okay, it is my understanding from emails with Paul, putting this ditch underground may have potential impacts to the FEMA floodplain upstream of McCarran. It is also my opinion that putting this ditch underground in a pipe that is a continuation of what is under McCarran will cause further backups upstream in the Yori ditch, causing waters to increase west of McCarran as they hit a longer section of potentially inadequate and clogged pipe, thereby detrimentally impacting west of McCarran, along with the communities south and east of this PUD. There used to be over 10,000 acres of floodplain in the Truckee Meadows. Reno is down to their final 1,600 acres. Do not continue to eat away at our protections. Protect the existing communities and do not change the site from an LLR1 to PUD. Oh, my God, I finished it.
You did it. Great job. Come on, even clap that, Kim. Bob Rusk?
Mayor and council. Bob Rusk, downtown Washoe Valley, 1961 graduate, Diablo Valley College, Pleasant Hill, looking to earn a BS degree in business administration from either Fresno State or UNR. Thank God Coach Dankworth offered me a track scholarship, tuition waiver, and a busboy job at the Golden Rooster Room in the Sparks Nugget. Dick Graves owner, general manager, John Esquaga. Wow, a land-grant mission of UNR, a great agricultural school and the finest mining college on the West Coast. Both had one thing in common, they loved dirt. I love dirt. Open space, desert, alpine, Lake Tahoe, mountains, best of all, green pasture, grease, grass, hay, alfalfa crops, and so on. I am a member of the Nevada Bureau, Farm Bureau, and the Douglas County Farm Bureau. 30 years ago, I acquired some hayland in Washoe Valley and have been a happy hay farmer ever since. Please allow the main station farm to continue its use for the public good, meaning agriculture research benefiting Nevada agriculture, as has always been the intention. No zone change. Do not violate the land-grant mission of the, of UNR, please. As to Washoe Valley, remaining rural ranching, Nevada Land Conservancy, the past 10 years, been working on preserving the historic Winters Ranch of the 2,000 acres. The last 304 acres should be completed, the total purchase, in 2012. In addition, another eight ranches raise hay and cattle, coyotes, and great white owls, encompassing another 2,500 acres. All of the above use the ag school services. Thank you.
Thank you. David Gibson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. For the record, my name is David Gibson. I'm a local homeowner, and I grow food in my backyard. Mic check?
Mic check.
Mic check?
Mic check.
The land in question belongs to the people of the state of Nevada.
The land in question belongs to the people of the state of Nevada.
Zoning it for development is not in our best interest.
Zoning it for development is not in our best interest.
Wolf, wolf pack meats is the only option for many small local ranchers.
Wolf pack meats is the only option for many small local ranchers.
Do not deprive Reno citizens access to meat from locally and humanely raised animals.
Do not deprive Reno citizens access to meat from locally and humanely raised animals.
Yesterday, 1.28 million acres of our state was sold to a Florida developer for just $25 an acre.
Yesterday, 1.28 million acres of our state was sold to a Florida developer for just $25 an acre.
This must stop.
This must stop.
If you continue to short-sell our land for the benefit of a few, we will not reelect you.
If you continue to short-sell our land for the benefit of a few, we will not reelect you.
Whose land?
Our land.
Whose farm?
Our farm.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm termed out, anyway. Anyway, that was very good. Thank you very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the table. Any discussion, Ms. President?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before it comes back for, to this body, there were just a couple questions that I did want answered before it came back, and one of them specifically, and Terry had mentioned this, was the Mankey piece, and if, if staff could show the map just really quickly in the proposed, is staff here?
We can get an opinion on that and get that stuff back to you, unless they have a map.
Yeah, that's what I would like to see, because that's what I was gonna bring up tonight. Can you show me where the Mankey piece is on this map?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. It's just south of the.
Right there, right there.
And, and I do believe it's worth noting that they came in for essentially the same zoning and master plan change and back in March of this year, and the council denied that master plan change for the parcel directly adjacent to this, for the same exact uses, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the PUD application by UNR, and that was denied by this council. So I guess a legal, I would like some legal analysis before it comes back to us in the 90-day period. Potential, I mean, we, we denied that based on flooding, based on the intensity of the zoning, all the things that we're hearing basically from the public today, the public testimony. I think that's gotta come, come back to us, and some legal analysis has to be done. And the second thing, I just want to thank everybody for coming down. I tried to respond to all the emails. There were quite a few of them, and I think I've received more emails on this than all the projects combined since I've been on the city council the last 11 years. So Wendy, you did your job. Where's Wendy? So I do appreciate the, the participation. I know, Mr. Mayor, you're, you've got fans from all across the country who emailed you too, so.
Right, and I, and I would answer them, but I don't know how.
[laughing].
So don't take it as I'm being disrespectful or discourteous or anything. Ladies and gentlemen, yes, Mr. President?
I just had to make a disclosure, Mr. Mayor. There were two speakers, that they own a farm, and it's a subscription farm, and my family's been a subscriber to the Girl Farms, and I wanted to make that disclosure. I don't think it's gonna affect me here, just got me more information on the other side. I also want to point out to the audience here, they've mentioned your climate change, and we should be respecting open space. I wish we had some of you people here. We just purchased 220 acres in the middle of Reno to keep it as open space. So the city has been very good at doing those kind of things, and part of that was because of Girl Farms and talking about local agriculture, why we started to do that. And the last thing I'll say is, I'm glad this came forward, quite honestly, because it shows, it does bring people together, even when they're opposed to things. I think this is gonna get worked out, and it could have easily just drifted through the cracks, and I love to see this kind of participation.
Absolutely. Mr. Asher?
Yeah, I would just direct staff to go to these meetings so they can adjust their staff report and report back to us as how, how the meetings went and the tenor of the meetings, so we'd get some sense if there was really some collaboration here to resolve it.
Okay, I do have a question for legal staff. Is it legal for council to attend those meetings if UNR does have the, the town halls? Because we do have to, in this capacity, we're sitting as essentially the judge, so I know the legal counsel has typically told us not to go to planning commissions and the NABS and things like that on land use cases, but I would like the city attorney's opinion on that.
Essentially, what you're talking about is an open meeting law and whether there's a quorum of the council or not. So we would recommend that you not have a quorum of the council unless it is noticed as a core or as a council meeting. So otherwise, we would recommend that if fewer than four attend this, any particular meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, giving us input. This is the American way to do it, and we really appreciate everything. We have already taken a motion to postpone this, and now it lasts for a motion for adjournment. Whoops, excuse me, public comment. Oh, I know it, the legislature put another public comment there. Anybody got any public comments you'd like to, any 100 of you? I'm only kidding.
Mr. Mayor, before that, one, just to follow up on Councilwoman Spazza's, it's okay to attend, but don't become an active participant, because the problem is if you become an active participant, now you're taking sides, and therefore you're.
That was my question, because some people like us to attend these things, but then does it, it becomes problematic, because then we have to recuse, and then we can't vote on it at this table, so.
If you don't participate, you can do it.
So if you want to sit in the audience and listen to everybody, but don't take an active role, you're probably. active role, you're probably going to be okay. But as soon as you take a position, now you're predisposed to how you're going to judge the case and that's where the problems run in. So if you go, just be there to be an observer, but not a participant.
Bigger venue? Oh, you want to sit down? Okay, okay, okay. Well, if I would have known that we were going to have this bigger crowd tonight, we would have made arrangements for a little different and we will look for it. But we've asked for a postponement now and it has been passed. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries on. Thank all of you very, very much.